And today's agenda item is discussing our sense of place districts. Before we get started, we do allocate 30 minutes at the start of the meeting for public comment. I don't know if, Treasury Clerk, you've got a couple?
I do have, Mayor, I do have one speaker who's asked to speak to you. That is Wendy Gray. And if there are others, they can find a speaker form like this at the back table and bring it to me.
Perfect. Wendy?
I assume you want her to come to the microphone so she can be heard for you and for the audience.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to speak to you this afternoon. I appreciate and understand the value of the Sense of Place initiative and certainly understand your desire to move forward with those areas that have been established. If you look at the map of them, many of them are within the multimodal transportation district. And I think several of you know that for several years I have been watching the implementation of the district and have come to the conclusion that there are a number of problems with the ordinance as it's written, as well as some implementation issues with the code itself. The other issue with creating a really viable multimodal district is how we treat our major roadways. And many of those are under the control of the state and require FDOT's agreement for us to make them more pedestrian and more transit friendly. So the reason I bring that up in this context is while these discrete areas that you're looking at within the sense of place are important, the broader issue of how we create a more multimodal, walkable, transit-friendly, pedestrian-friendly area within the multimodal district continues to be a major issue that I believe the Commission really needs to allocate resources towards. And this is not an either/or, it's an "and." The placemaking efforts need to move forward, and we need to look at those general areas within the community that are not within the sense of place district, how we begin to make them more pedestrian-friendly, more mixed-use, and more transit-friendly. So a number of months ago, I know that I spoke with both Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Ziffer, who talked about the possibility of trying to move this forward. And I would bring that request again to you today to see if we could take action on addressing the improvements that are needed to the MMTD. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
We do have another speaker, Mayor. That is Dan Gilbertson. And I failed to ask Ms. Gray to provide her name and address for the record, but I do have that on her form. So if Mr. Gilbertson will come to the microphone, he'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Dan Gilbertson at 215 West College Avenue. Want to talk to you a little bit about the sense of place in College Avenue. As you know, that's been kind of on the table for many years, going almost 15 years ago trying to cooperate with FSU and doing a beautification of College Avenue. And there's been a lot of discussions on that, and it's kind of fallen off. But I know there's not funds right now, but it has been a priority as marked for this project. But the reason I want to speak to you is there is, right now, the city's about to invest in some, putting parking back there, doing some bump outs, as well as some new retail that's about to open the next, within a week here down there. I think it's a great opportunity if you get the different departments that you have looking at where they're about to spend money now and what they want to do so that you're not causing the tear-up stuff you're about to spend money on. So I think it's really important, if you really take a good look at it and give some budgets, and you're talking about the parking in that area, the beautification, there's some stormwater issues that weren't taken care of that I thought were going to be taken care of, and some of the projects that were down there. So some of these things right now, you might want to look at what's currently being done and what you want to do to see if maybe there's some funds you can pull. I saw somewhere in the report, there's some funds, maybe in Midtown, some other areas that were not really designated for use right now. So maybe you can look at some of the funds that you have in other areas and say, we know we're going to spend this money, we know we want to do this, we want the wide sidewalk. So what can we do right now with money we're about to spend to make sure we don't now dig up the money that we're about to spend right now and waste it? So I think it's important that staff kind of takes a look at it and says, you know, let's see what can be done right now, what budget items need to be done, and see if we can save some money or not cause us to spend extra money. So that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
So the Attorney, you want to introduce the item? That is, that's the last speaker, yes.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, this will be the first of two workshops this year to help address the 2016 City Commission prioritization of efforts related to creating a sense of place in Tallahassee. The goal of today's workshop is to review the current status of designated placemaking districts and propose a 2016 work plan. Cherie Bryan, a manager of the planning department, will provide an overview of the information.
Good afternoon. This did begin the sense of place issues. Efforts started back in 2011, and we started those out having a series of work groups with businesses and landowner, and property owners in the area. We saw some themes come up with every one of them, and that was looking for some branding. Most all of them talked about the need to have parking. Sometimes it was to add more parking, and other issues like on Monroe Street was to deal with the parking in front of the buildings. A focus on arts and culture and murals were a reoccurring theme. And of course, support for local businesses was one of the things that drove the efforts in the first place. And then supporting more infill while also adding to the walkable and bikeable nature of the areas. The final themes were public space and traffic safety. So it was interesting, when you got the stakeholders in a room, you started to see the same themes over and over. So what I'd like to do now is to go into that, I state that because what we're going to see is the implementation of some of those themes. First off, just to get us everyone oriented, the district locations. We have Gaines Street, Midtown, Monroe Adams Corridor, Market District north of I-10, and the College Avenue District, which Mr. Gilbertson just mentioned. Orange Avenue was one that we haven't seen as much of, but it is focused around the superstop in that area. They're all, won't spend much time on it today, but it was referenced in your item because there's sometimes the possibility of overlap. But the county was impressed with the sense of place work and has then incorporated some other efforts outside of the city limits for the Huntington Sense of Place north, on North Monroe Street, Fairgrounds, and then recently, Mikasuki Rural Community has been, is going to become a focus. Gaines Street is, of course, the oldest and the largest, and it's, the total would be almost $35 million for the redevelopment, reconstruction of that corridor dealing with utilities. And as you can see, just walking down the street, it's had an extremely transformative, hugely transformative effect. Property values have benefited significantly, which then, of course, feeds into the CRA. There's some supplemental stormwater projects, it's, most of the construction is done, but there are some supplemental stormwater projects going on to further support redevelopment. And then the parking plan and the wayfinding is a work item this year. So here we, the stormwater outfall, it's addressed in the report, but that would help facilitate more on the western end of the streets, some more redevelopment, which during significant flooding events, it's prohibiting some redevelopment along the corridor. This is the next stage of wayfinding signage that you see in Monroe's on Gaines Street. I think this juxtaposition, although at first it looks a little interesting, shows you that it's setting the place for redevelopment. You're transitioning some suburban areas into urban areas. So the signage and the infrastructure is continuing to be, to prime the area for redevelopment. So this is, like the signs you see downtown, the 2016 will be working on the Gaines Street as well. The wayfinding signs to support the parking, we talked recently about the need for additional parking in the All Saints area, so to support the festivities in the area. When we met with the individuals that, and I see some of the All Streets representatives here today, I was actually happy to deal with the problem, not that they had a problem with parking that we're dealing with, but that when I started with the planning department, we were doing everything we could to try to encourage redevelopment, to try to encourage people to come downtown, to try to live downtown, to have things to do downtown. The fact that we're now trying to find parking because there's so many things happening downtown, while it's an important problem, not to dismiss it, it's a good problem to have. So that is something that, from the Design Works Studio, we're looking at this, producing a user-friendly map. This is just a draft to give you an idea. Right now, this is helping to show where some additional markers would go. So this is more of a technical indication of where some signage could go. But we'll be producing a, excuse me, a public map so that businesses can then distribute it to their visitors, to their customers, to help them locate parking in the area.
Does our current planning require any sort of signage around publicly available parking, especially when it's co-located with a private development?
There is some signage, but as we've gone out after the discussion at the City Commission recently, we went out and looked at it. It could be made a lot more visible to help people understand, because sometimes I think some of this, there's so much verbiage on the signage, it's confusing. Sometimes there's signage about towing, which is related to some of the private spots. And so we are doing this analysis so that we can figure out ways to make it a lot more obvious to do so. And then not only have the parking when you're at the destination, but build in a wayfinding system to get people at the key decision points where they can decide, do I move here or do I turn right or turn left to get to those public parking spaces?
You know, in some cities, you'll find the big blue P.
Yes.
And it just protrudes off of whatever the parking structure is. You can recognize it almost anywhere. Folks know that means, you know, in the circle is public parking. And I'm just, you know, particularly in those players that we participate in, in those developments along Gaines Street, where we've been participants. And then, you know, I wouldn't have known but for an item that came before the Commission meeting that there was public parking required and that we've already paid for it.
Correct.
So I think the universal signage is, you know, I think is a high priority.
Absolutely. And that is what we'll be doing with this wayfinding program. We were trying to coordinate some things with FSU so that, but some of that may take a little bit longer, so we're looking at moving forward with perhaps a shorter first phase so that you can see some things on the ground. Midtown, that was originally allocated $500,000 and then additional money allocated afterwards for a total of about $660,000 for the action plan. And then $22 million is in the hopper for investments, the Gaines Street type treatment within the available right-of-way for Monroe and for Thomasville Roads. The implementation highlights, they're listed here, but I'm just going to go to the pictures because the pictures are more telling than the words are. The Fifth Avenue Plaza, which the, like I said, the reoccurring theme was to have a public space that could be utilized for various purposes. Then this was the grand opening of the plaza, oh, and there's Commissioners Ziffer, I think, right in the middle. We didn't do that on purpose. The Toluca Fest was the festival that began last year. The Midtown Merchants Association came to the planning department there because there was some money for events and promotions. The Toluca Fest is planned to occur again, is to be an annual event, and it involves the closure of Thomasville Road to have a really large block party feel type to it and just to use the plaza for its intended purposes. There are work plans coming up for 2016. The work plans would be to complete the installation of the wayfinding signs in Midtown. That is the goal for this year. Similar to the ones you see on Gaines Street and downtown, but they have their own identifying finial up top. That's going to be the image and the, to help with the branding of the area. Each sense of place has its own finial associated with the same family of signs. Like I mentioned, support for the Toluca Fest coming up this May as well. Recap Monroe Adams. This was allocated just over $1 million. A lot of that was spent for the Palmer Avenue investments. Then $7 million from Blueprint is slated to basically do similar things, to similar treatments as this to Palmer Avenue. One big cost for the Palmer Avenue redevelopment and would continue to be a cost for future cross-sections is putting the utilities underground. That does add significantly to the cost, but it also adds significantly to the ability to use the right-of-way for more pedestrian purposes and also making the businesses more visible. The future sales tax projects would go, continue from FAMU Way all the way down to Magnolia to go ahead and do this treatment for the cross-sections. And then as well, do some median treatment on Monroe Street to try to add some greenery into the area to soften the harshness of what is a very much concrete landscape there.
Could I have a clarification question?
Yes.
You said you want to do this treatment on every road?
From Palmer, excuse me, from FAMU Way to Magnolia, there are a series of streets, cross-streets between Magnolia and Adams. And to the extent possible, this one is more of an entrance into FAMU, so extra effort was made to make certain you have the lighting. But none of those cross-streets, until we did the Palmer investments, none of those cross-streets between Monroe and Adams actually had sidewalks linking the two. And those are important linkages into the FAMU campus, into the businesses on either road. So that, that's, that was the reason. So each core, each road will have to identify based on the right-of-way and the utility issue exactly what the treatment would look like. But to incorporate as many of these elements as possible, yes.
Well, this was by far, I mean, this is, and also the Fifth Avenue Plaza was, you know, those were major, but I just can't imagine being able to afford to do this type of thing on every single road.
Commissioners, I think-
Wait, one other thing. I was understanding that that was going to go a block on the east side also, and there certainly can't be enough to support that.
Commissioners, I think the only thing that you will probably see different between this corridor and others, you see the significant slopes, and there needed to be some sort of stormwater treatment facility related to this. So the seating walls were a direct relationship to the slopes of that corridor, as well as providing the green space between the seating walls and the roadway that also functions as stormwater management facilities. We are looking at right now with the funds for Magnolia Drive, all the way from Athol Parkway to Adams Street, we are looking at a very similar cross-section where you have a 10 or 12-foot wide sidewalk. You will have street lights or pedestrian lights and a planted green space between the back of curb and the sidewalk, very much where you see the seating walls here. So that typical section is very important to maintain, having the wide sidewalks, having the pedestrian lighting, and that's your basic components for the urban infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you.
The Anita Favors Thompson over the Under Plaza is also a recent investment in the area, establishing that sense of place. The bridge, it's hard to underestimate how impactful that bridge is going to be for the corridor. And then, as Wayne mentioned, the investments on Magnolia Drive, making that further connection, both north and south, and adding the bicycle and pedestrian accessibility. It's going to be a nice cap with FAMU Way on the north, Magnolia on the drive, and then doing the streets between Palmer, already an example. We're starting to fill in the gap based on the goals that were outlined in that sense of place plan.
One thing I could add to this, Commissioners, is that for the section between Magnolia and South Adams Street, we're using current Blueprint 2000 funds to fund the 2020 sales tax project. As you all recall from our April 1st, 2015 meeting, we have a pretty significant deficit between the project cost estimated and the sales tax revenues that will be generated from the 20-year sales tax. This is one opportunity to leverage funds, if you will, to basically reduce that deficit between the projects that we have for the 2020 sales tax projects. So this is a consistent theme that we're trying to look for as these projects come up in these areas, that we can tie current funding sources with these future sales tax projects to close that gap in funding needs that we have for the 2020 program.
We're working with the Big Ben Cares to also implement that, that roadway sections, just to let you see the site plan and how they're working with this, to have the building, existing building up on the street and working with us to incorporate that in the right-of-way. And then, as I mentioned, FAMU Way coming through to the north. The work for Monroe Adams, there's ongoing work there, will simply consist of continuing to facilitate redevelopment that occurs in the area to make certain that we can support the walkable development as much as possible. Both state, both Adams and Monroe are state roads. So as Ms. Gray mentioned earlier, we're still working through some of those issues. But we are working with each developer as they come in to do, have those pedestrian sidewalks, street trees when they come in for redevelopment. Market District, this one was also allocated $500,000. A small portion of that's been utilized for the events and promotions at the request of the merchants. The remainder of the funds, past couple of years, those have been basically on hold while the further refinement of the stormwater pond in the area, if you recall. The facilities, the stormwater pond on either side of McClay Boulevard is basically chain-linked, and what came out of that as the, as a goal from the working group was to have a park-like amenity, similar to Lake Ella, that people could use for, for walking, for picnics. And that is, we've had to have some land purchases before that can happen. So those things have taken a good bit of time, but movement is being made on the design of that now. The direction, basically from the Commission a couple of years ago, was to go ahead and wait for the, to see how that panned out because that extra $470,000 may be critical in pulling together the vision for the stormwater pond. So that's why we haven't seen a whole lot of work in this area to date, but it was to build in that bigger picture. What we do have planned is some additional connections as well for the bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements on tap that could be used. If all the $400,000 is not needed for the pond, then we could use those for enhancing the intersections. And here are the ponds that I was talking about. And this is the Tiger Grant project map. I know, Commissioner, you had had some questions about that, if you wanted me to pause on this slide. I'd be happy to do so or move on and we can come back to it.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
As long as, well-
We had the Tiger Grant that was submitted a few years ago to try to facilitate some of these improvements before the sales tax project, because the sales tax project would run all the way from McClay Road down to, basically to Timber Lane and do a nice Boulevard effect for the corridor in addition to the ponds. So that would facilitate also some connections to Timber Lane Road sidewalks and some trail connections. That Tiger Grant was not successful, so those pieces still remain. But they'll have to, at this point, be done with the sales tax project when it comes into 2020.
And if I could clarify why, the reason I asked for the map was because I wanted to see that road improvement that you see, the little circles, because those were roundabouts. And it just really facilitated pedestrian traffic flow and, and car traffic too. The road from, it runs behind, the Fresh Market there basically is never completed. I mean, one lane of it is finished and on each side, not two. Things like that, that at the request of the former DOT Secretary, yeah, we went in and our staff put in part of the sidewalk there, but that's not completed, that, just the stretch that goes, that last, that top circled up to McClay and see on McClay, from McClay Inn to Thomasville, from that intersection in, is, there's already a sidewalk there, but it doesn't connect it really anything. And so there's these little piecemeals of things, and the whole point was that this business district was really thriving and there, it's a pretty popular shopping destination. And, and this whole plan was, which was adopted in 2011, basically has just come to a standstill. So, but the road improvements too are, I think, important.
College Avenue placemaking, this was not actually an effort that was conducted by city staff, but it was an effort that was initiated in coordination with the Department of Urban and Regional Planning. So they had produced a report, which then was presented to the long-range target issue in the City Commission, and as a result, ended up being incorporated into the sales tax projects, focusing on connections between the campus and the conference, the law school, the conference center that's proposed to be built. So no work has been done on this, there's no funding allocated, but money is allocated in the sales tax project. Orange Avenue-
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Now, where is the Arena District project that FSU has going on? How does that affect this?
The Arena District project in the College Avenue Sense of Place, they're two separate projects in sales tax going forward, but they're very much related. College Avenue came first, this study by the Department of Urban and Regional Planning came first. And then it talked about the need for connections to that area, to the Civic Center. So what's going to have to happen in the future is the two will probably end up, I imagine, going forward, they'll be coordinated. That, at this point, they're so conceptual in nature that there's not specific plans, but they feed off of one other and have their own separate pots of money. Then again, another one, Orange Avenue Meridian placemaking, that really came to fruition through the sales tax vetting of projects and community input. There is a superstop planned there, but there is not really funding yet allocated to it other than the sales tax funding. But you can see how that can tie into the connectivity and the multimodal factors on Monroe's south side of town with Monroe Adams as well.
What's the $4.1 million dedicated to?
For-
This blueprint project, but-
That's for the superstop project overall, not specific. The superstop would be there at, in the blue shaded area. That's Monroe Street.
Orange and Meridian.
Orange and Meridian, Orange and Meridian.
Is that where that convenience store is?
Across the street.
Okay. Well, there are two convenience stores, right?
Um, yes.
There's one in the south, west, and one in northeast corner.
Yes, the northwest intersection of Meridian and Orange Avenue.
Where's that pond related to?
The large ponds, the big pond, or the stormwater pond is the large block, blue area. The property where the superstop would be the smaller blue block.
Which is right across from Wesson too, isn't it? Isn't Wesson there?
Yes.
Pretty close, yeah. And that was part of our Tiger Grant last year application.
It's treated, so go back to the slides. So one thing we are doing again per the- It's treated, so go back to the slides. So one thing we are doing, again, per the direction of the IA, is looking for opportunities to leverage other money. We are in the process of developing a tap grant through the CRTPA to look for funding for the superstop area as much as we can. So again, we are looking at opportunities to get 2020 projects moving along with other folks' dollars.
Good.
OPM, OPM.
OPM.
Basically, at this point, I just want to wrap up the, the work plan. This is, this was an update for where we are. As the manager mentioned in the beginning, it sort of sets up for further discussions later in the year. But we have these following, these items that I went through on the plan for 2016, facilitating with some other work in McClay area, Market District area, working with utilities. I won't read through these again because I hit on them each as I was going through. But there was a work plan, an action plan associated with each of the three city-funded Sense of Place areas that identified dozens of things. The major infrastructure projects are being rolled into and coordinated through Blueprint, but then there were lots of smaller things. Placemaking, as you know, is, it's about investing in that infrastructure, but the goal is to lead to that social interaction, the vibrancy, the urban, the urban redevelopment. So there are a lot of things on the social side and personal side, as far as encouraging personal interactions, that we're trying to chip away at gradually. So the few things that you see on here, such as the Tolufofest, we're just trying to pick a few of those each year and gradually implement those action plans with their existing resources. Basically, that's where we are. So I'd like to open up for questions, get some feedback, see if there's any other further direction that you'd like to provide on any of these. And Wayne or Ben, if you'd like to add anything.
Thank you both, all three of you. Commissioners, any questions on the material presented?
I have a suggestion. And Wayne, you and I have had this conversation. I was actually going to bring it up tonight, but now it's just as good a time as any. When we start talking about the parking, there are some opportunities for us, currently there are in our central core, in our university urban village zoning categories. We don't allow for parking in lots that are currently, let's say, underutilized. And so there's an opportunity for us, I think, to do a amendment so that we can allow parking in those areas, so that we can start to create, at least on a temporary basis, opportunities for people to park where currently they can't, or it's illegal and they are already. So I would just like, if we could, for sake of discussion, maybe get approval for direct staff to look at that and see how we might do that.
Support that.
Bless you. Support.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner.
So the Market District, the earliest we're looking at stormwater construction there is what?
Let me get Jody to, Jody, won't you?
Probably about a year and a half following construction. We've already started acquisitions of parcels, engineering, analyzing, contest, free use, coordinating with the electric department, so there's some coordination that needs to happen there.
Okay. Since you weren't at a microphone, I'll repeat. So we're looking about a year and a half or so in coordinating to start. This is a little minor, but there's a, a private road that runs on the, it's not, when I say private, it's open to the public, but it is, was not a city street, that runs on the south side of the pond. You know where I'm talking about, that goes by Petite Players, all that. That road is in terrible disrepair with giant potholes, because it's not a city street and it's not kept up. However, I think that, that we have some responsibility in fixing it, because we have an electric substation back behind there, and city vehicles go up and down it all the time, and I, which I think have led to part of the disrepair. So I'd like to see if we could look at finding a way to patch that prior to any construction on the, on the stormwater.
So Commissioner, you were mentioning McClay Commerce Drive, is that correct?
I believe so.
It's on the north side?
Okay. You see where it connects to the electric?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
System. So that becomes a cut-through for our vehicles, which have led to the disrepair of the road. And even though it's privately owned, I wouldn't think they would want to make major improvements, knowing that our improvements are coming on the, on the stormwater facility, which is directly across, borders that road. So if we could look at possibly patching that, or some stopgap that, because it's a hazard.
And Commissioners, this could fit into just how the whole project works together. So I think Jody's shop is in process of seeing what their opportunities and constraints are. I think that's going to be completed somewhere midsummer. So we can have a very detailed issue document, if you will, so they can start beginning concepts around that. It may be that it could be folded into a concept moving forward. So going back to one of the previous comments from Mr. Gilbertson, is you're not undoing something that you are spending money for to get to a better improvement down the road. So if we can link those two together, it might be a better approach, so we can do it one time and, at a more efficient process, if you will. But certainly, if there's issues that are dangerous, I think that's an immediate need that we need to look at.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I want to address Wendy Gray's comments, because we have been talking from time to time, and I know Commissioner Miller, you have expressed some frustration when it comes to some of the things that we've been doing in the multimodal area that it needs a relook. I made a comment last week, I think it was last week, at our Village Square event, where I was talking about economic development. And one of the reasons why we hire people on the outside is because we're not economic development experts. And I think in this particular case, when it comes to looking at the multimodal area, I think it would be helpful for us to consider hiring an outside something to help with our planning department, to come up with suggestions, because we need to fix this, because each time we have, and nothing against Buffaloes, it's great food, I don't eat there often because wings aren't good for me, but we don't want any more of those. And I think we recognize that, but we continue to often make some other things. And so I, I would like us to look at hiring somebody from the outside that maybe has done this in other markets to give us some assistance. I'm not sure how we do that, but I'm open for suggestions.
I would agree. As you all know, I mean, I've made no secret of that. And even going back to the little paper that I went over with you all, with Commissioners Ziffer, when we transferred responsibility for long-range planning, I mean, the thing, the premier thing that is concerning me is the absolute devastation of any blade of grass on lots. And I think that it's wonderful to really promote envile to this degree, but we are known for our beautiful city. And you, we, I don't have 25 more years to wait for those little trees that are getting planted to grow back up into something that resembles, even in any way, what was there before. So, plus landscaping has been cut back to a very small portion of the, of the property. And so how you put all those together, I've raised the issues, Commissioner Ziffer's raised the issues, several other people, members of the community have. And we just don't, I brought this to the retreat last year, and we just aren't getting there. So I would support you in that suggestion.
I think if I can add, we had this discussion in our target issue group, and it, you and I agreed to move it forward, and it just, it didn't. So I would like staff to relook at what we had those conversations about. And rather than wait until October, November, we go ahead and bring something before the Commission as soon as possible, so that we can go ahead and get this moving. If that's...
Right.
So if I need to do that in a motion, I make the motion that we move forward with identifying, developing an RFP to assist our planning department with development of changes to the multimodal area that will address the issues we talked about in our meetings, and bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
I would second that, so.
Just a point of inquiry, the issue that was previously addressed in your target issue was what exactly?
That we have some problems with our multimodal district. There are some restrictions that may need some modification, that we're, might need some outside help to give us ideas that have been working in other communities, so that we don't continue to stumble.
Okay. So the motion, and the second, is to ask staff to develop a RFP to bring back for the Commission to review. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner?
And I think that that is a, an overarching issue, because so many of these fall into, into that multimodal area. But one of the things that I wanted to accomplish when I brought this up was the fact that we have these adopted plans. And if you look at them, if anybody wants to see one, I, who save everything, have these available. But in reviewing this, you know, I was just looking over this, just this one, the Market District, and the weaknesses that the, the public comments listed, virtually everything is simple and easy to fix. I mean, tree, more tree plantings, more car safety, you know, walkability. You know, we talk a lot about, you always say bike and ride, and, and you said that these, these areas are for public space and traffic safety. And really, I would say, these areas are public space and pedestrian safety, because these, they are already, the businesses are already developing. The neighborhoods around them, all these plans had neighborhood and business involvement jointly. And like, for Midtown example, you had Lafayette Park involved, you had Los Robles involved. And in, up in Market District, you had Kalarne involved, which surprised me, but the fact is, they were. And, and people are walking. People are, our folks are Skip, Cook, dear Skip and Paula Cook, who really didn't think they were going to like some of the changes that came to the, the area up there, have, they're the walkingest folks in town. And so our population is, needs this, and our business, we, this is how we support small businesses, right here. So I would like for us to ultimately get to the point where we see some of these things done. And even if they're, I don't know what the proper step is. I wanted to bring this up prior to budgeting. I'm not, the roads are, as, as Mr. Fernandez told me earlier today, can't be done today, can't be done tomorrow. But some of this, some of these suggestions are easy to, to do. And we've done so much work on the other two Sense of Place areas, that this one deserves some attention. As far as Midtown is concerned, I, I hope you all realize that all of that traffic we're generating north of town is all ending up, not all of it, but a lot of it is ending up right there, where Thomasville Road narrows to two lanes at Sixth and Seventh. And in my view, as we went through the sales tax discussions, that is probably one of the most critical and, and eminently catastrophic and difficult problems with traffic management that we have in the whole city. I mean, the way Gaston comes in, and right there in that curve, all of that is a real, a real challenge. And we've got to begin to focus on that. And I hope that the 20, that the 20 million or whatever that's in the sales tax will help to do that. I know that the city manager is working with DOT to discuss this, but that is part of the Midtown experience, and, and needs to be on all of our minds.
Commissioners, you actually have taken action to help facilitate that as part of the, again, April 4th IA agenda item. You directed staff to include all state projects or, that were in our sales tax projects in our regional mobility plan. That intersection is one of those that is on the state roadway, and it's in our regional mobility plan. So what DOT is clearly doing, and you'll get this update at your IA meeting at the end of this month, is you have your regional mobility plan adopted, and they are starting to send money in a major way down to Tallahassee to implement their, their list of projects. So that is on the list. We just have to go through the order of their prioritization to make sure we can put the money there.
Okay.
One of the, Commissioner, your, your comment around the Midtown area, you know, the parking is also
Yes.
one of those major themes in that part of the, the city. And this will relate to, to another comment I want to make, but there was a developer who came to share with me a aggregation of land that they're doing in that area. And, you know, it immediately occurred to me, you know, since it's multi-story, how do we get public parking integrated potentially in this project? If you're going to turn dirt anyway, and, and you have plans of accommodating parking for your residents, is there a way that you all would be open to us participating in helping to meet some of Midtown's parking? I don't know how often this conversation is, is coming to the surface as we hear around about projects, but I understand that there's some elements coming down the pike, where we really ought to, you know, to the extent that it occurs to staff, that there may be an opportunity for us to participate, to achieve some of the public parking needs that we have. I'd love to see those raised to the, our level of, you know, understanding and conversation, so that we can make a decision as to whether or not it's a good public policy decision to do. And then I heard as well that on the west side of town, which we don't, we don't have a map up there for any Sense of Place necessarily there, and some folks think that it's an often neglected part when it comes to redevelopment and development priorities of the city, that there are maybe four or five apartments or something coming down the pike, because they, they've seen what's happening on Gain Street, and are now trying to become much more urban in the redevelopment, so that they are more walkable and pedestrian-friendly, but also multimodal-friendly. And although we have to treat these as individual projects as they come through, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not staff has mapped this in such a way that if there are ways in which they can participate together to create more walkability in that area. I know oftentimes folks make the, the transportation contribution to doing bus stops and that kind of thing. I'm interested in what could be done by way of, you know, bike lanes and maybe signage improvements, which are a little bit outside of the bounds of how we normally treat the concurrency piece. But if we're not going to be expanding lanes, and they're going into a potential teardown situation, and rebuilding, in a much more 21st century way, I'd love for us to, to think about these things as, even though they're individual projects, as one, so that we can get a much better public outcome for what is private development and private investment in, in that part of our city. And I forgot to mention to include a pretty major grocery store coming in as, in that part of the, of the city as well. And I think the last thing we need is everybody jumping in a car to get there. If there's a way to make it much more attractive to walk, I think, you know, I think all the, I think all the better. Commissioner?
I think part of what we're suggesting staff come back to with the recommendation on the multimodal area is coming back and looking at how we deal with pedestrian traffic and how we deal with bicycles, and, and be more holistic instead of kind of what we're doing. And let me add one more thing. And I don't know whether we lost it in the conversation, or, and I apologize if I'm drawing a blank on this. But Commissioner, you brought up a very good point. We're on the, the northern side of Thomas Road, as it moves through, depending on how you define Midtown. On the southern side, we have where Thomas Road hits Monroe, where I read there's a
Project.
potential project. And so, which is then two blocks away from our Governor's Walk, Adams Street effort, which hasn't even been mentioned. And so there's another example of how all these different things, and we have All Saints over here, and we've talked about tying it with Gain Street, these are all connected.
Yes.
You know, we have, it's, it's almost like there's this whole region where we have Sense of Places all in one Sense of Place, because we're growing. So I'm hopeful that when we go through this RFP process, and we're able to find somebody, that we can talk about those bigger issues holistically, all working together, because clearly, what's going to happen up where the intersection you discussed, going down to where this exchange, is that what it's called? What's the point, whatever that is?
Point.
The point, going over to Governor's Walk, then going down to South Monroe and South Adams, all connected. So.
Wanted to add my voice to, I agree. And I want to add my voice to the, the parking in Midtown. So if you look at what our investments have been, and each one of these districts are unique and, and different. But, so we're dealing with the, the problem of lack of public parking in the All Saints area, and we're coming up with strategies for that. But that's after $35 million worth of investment, of government dollars. The, the investment in Midtown is the Fifth Avenue Plaza, and that's it. So Midtown has organically come up, market-driven. So any, anywhere where we can allow the market to drive it and not government drive it, and then we add parking as, as the cherry on top, that's well done, right? So we help sustain it by adding parking, but we don't have to carry the whole weight of transforming a district. And I understand why we did, obviously. I was one of the main ones pushing for it on it on Gaines and on Cascades Park, but we had, we had bigger problems, we had pollution problems, we had, uh, major, you know, EPA superfund problems. Where we sit today is, we can, in so many of these districts, we can expend just a little bit of dollars for parking, for lighting, for sidewalks, and tie them all together. So, this Commission has done the heavy work, and the Commissions that came before them have done all the heavy lifting. So, it's going to be pretty neat that we can use the 2020 sales tax dollars and the remaining dollars we have from the, the last sales tax to just tie them together. It's not going to be giant expenditures, uh, to, to make it all form like you're talking about. And, you know, I, I personally believe that the multimodal district is too large, that's the big problem i- in my mind. But of the districts that we were shown today, they can be very easily put together, use wayfinding to have proper signage and identify them, have a look that continues for mo- for all of them, and basically goes from the old Mutton Jeff's, which is now Midtown Caboose, all the way Franklin and Cascades Park, and an arts district around Cascades Park, to Orange Avenue, to, uh, FAMU Way, to the FAMU President's House, to the Arena District, to the Stadium, Florida State Stadium, Doak Campbell on the west side, and all the way back up to Midtown, all tied together, including College Avenue. So, you know, we, we can, we can get that done, and then, of course, you've got Market Square and the other ones that are, that are out a little further, but we can get that done in relatively short order, and I think it'll be transformative, be pretty neat.
Commissioner Miller, yes, ma'am.
Uh, well, first of all, I wanted to lend my support to both the Commissioners' comments. Uh, you know, the Midtown actually starts around Fifth, well, that's five blocks. Now, who doesn't walk five blocks? That's sort of not very far, and so to actually get from, to walk from College Avenue, well, it's a little, add a few, but, uh, say, from Park Avenue, which is block number zero, up to Midtown is, is not really very far. I'm sure Commissioner Ziffer walks that every day, he lives right around the corner there. And, um, so I think that tie, the way, but, but it's divided because it doesn't look walkable, it's becoming every day more and more and more attractive to people to, to just get out and take a walk. And, uh, and when they're walking, they're stopping, they're walking to the, uh, to the Midtown Caboose, they're walking to, um, the store there, um, on the corner of, Sixth, then Thomasville. They're, they're walking to all of these areas that are right in there, and, and our job is to make it safe for them to do that. I think, you know, there's a new building that's been, that's been built there on Thomasville that's just absolutely a beautiful job, um, and they've done a wonderful job in the front with their sidewalk and, and that whole, that whole area. And I'm assuming that when the Arena District gets started, that's going to, you're going to see that there, but every, and I sent to Mr. Tetter that, you know, the piece that we're going to be introducing the ordinance on tonight, the, the point you were referring to, well, my, I sent an email to him and said, where are the sidewalks? Because any new redevelopment, we expect to have that, and sure enough, he said, well, they'll be there, even, this was just a preliminary, like, concept plan. So, but I, do I have, do I hear that you all are supportive of the idea of, at least as we go through budgeting, looking to see if we can put a few pieces of these plans on the table in the budget, and start to even, I mean, we've got approved plans, and, and they're just going to be approved plans sitting on the shelf unless we begin to, at some point, make some sort of commitment toward trying to make these things real.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, Commissioners?
Do we have to vote on anything today?
The work plan, I, I move staff recommendations.
Yes.
It's a motion and second.
Could I ask, um, to make a friendly amendment to that, and that would be to add a, a parking plan for Midtown? Is that a reasonable, are we at a point in time where we could actually do that?
The maker of the motion accepts it as friendly?
And that would obviously be in addition to the, uh, conversation the Commission's already had around the Gaines Street All Saints area. There's a motion, a minute motion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Mayor, could I ask?
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
You know, tonight, we're going to be, this is a little bit early, but, uh, to have this, but, um, since we're on the topic of parking and so on, you know, there, we're going to be on our agenda tonight, talking about buying a piece of property that is next to the hotel, and that is a wonderful place because of its fashion and lining up with Gaines Street, where I'd like to at least have a discussion tonight about whether we could use that for parking and pocket park type treatment. I see someone that doesn't look happy about the whole idea, but, you know, that's why I brought it up, just to see what you...
No, I actually, actually, it's because I had a, a conversation with, um, city manager this morning about, um, um, somebody approached me about the need that, you know, other than Tom Brown Park, we don't have a dog park really anywhere where people can safely take their dog, and, and so we talked about an area down, at least I did, because somebody brought it to my attention, down near the cemetery where Park Avenue ends, but conceivably, you know, on small parcels like that, that are awkward, there may be an opportunity also to develop, because we've got all the students there and a lot of them have animals, and so, so maybe, um, Mr. City Manager, you could incorporate into what I talked about, looking at some of these other areas where clearly we have a high-density number of folks, and yet very few places for them to walk their dog.
And if I could just add to, Commissioner Miller, that area with the ordinance that you all had directed staff to move forward earlier with, uh, surface parking would not be allowed on that lot legally, so we could maybe blend and, and talk about both concepts.
Would be after we made the ordinance.
That is correct, that is correct.
And, and when I refer to a dog park, it's fairly simple, a fence, so that if and when it's redeveloped, those fences come up and they can go somewhere else.
Anything else, uh, to come before the Commission? Looks like you have a speaker guard?
We did have one other speaker come after earlier time, um, Joe Berg, if you'll come to the microphone here. Name and address, I would appreciate it, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Joe Berg, with the All Saints District Community Association, 694-1, Industrial Drive. I'll be brief, uh, I'm sorry, the conversation went in ways I didn't know it would, or I would have spoken at the beginning, but I saw a connection between some of our concerns, concerns I hear from other district associations and business owners that also overlapped with what three of the Commissioners said. If I might just have a quick minute. Commissioner Maddox, your point on the district overlap is well-taken, because it probably in five to 10 years, right at that intersection of Gaines and Railroad Avenue will be the Gaines Street District, the All Saints District, the bottom of the Arena District, there's talk of making everything from Cascades to there, the Arts District, the Talia Arts District, so I think some foresaw in this RFP is welcomed, because it's always been, there's, there's a mental thing going on between businesses on the same strip, going, no, we're part of this, and other people go, no, we're part of that. And I think that ties into what you were saying, Commissioner Ziffer, um, about the RFP, which I think is a great idea, but I was hoping, and I, I even even hadn't to know how to approach this idea in conversations with all of you, and thank you for being so open, the staff is really fantastic in this city. But I walked the district, I walked, uh, the College Town District this week, up and down everywhere, all the way up to Phase Two and anything that had been developed, and depending on what you count, a particular slot on the retail on the ground floor, there's anywhere between 25 and 40 vacant retail spots that have been available for some time. And there are many reasons for this, I think, that the, so it's privately owned, the development is there, and I think this is anticipi- anticipatory build-out for the traffic that's going to come. So, what I have followed, and what I know from direct interactions, are that the square footage rates are extremely high in those buildings. That's up to the developer, if it's market-driven, and they can leave them empty if they want to. What we do know, if you aren't aware, is that there's one family that owns the, most of the entire strip of the east side of Railroad Avenue, from the corner at Gaines Street, all the way down to where Bread and Roses is. And if that is to come up for sale, then that will become a major desirable parcel. Couple that with the fact that I'm to understand Tallahassee is ranked near the top of cities in need of hotels in the United States, based on, as an industry evaluation, but based on, I assume, things like the Arena District and the expected explosion in, or steady growth in population. To my point, there aren't really any mechanisms, and I don't know that there can be such a policy without opening a can of worms to discuss how the city can yoke back on what developers can do with their property, with the money that they care to invest. So, one possibility in this process would be, in the RFP, to include with whoever is hired to come in and evaluate this, to add extra criteria, such as impacts outside simply tax walkability and, and tax property increases, tax, property tax increases and jobs, but also other factors that are harder but can be, um, quantified, such as impact to entrepreneurialism. I think if we build these, if you compare the districts, as Commissioner Maddox said, between the organically grown Midtown and the intentionally fertilized Gaines Street, there has to be some way to better balance this, and it might be through choosing city initiatives, not just that improve, uh, general areas like the wonderful Cascades Park, but to find partnerships that would also create pockets of protected development in each of these areas. I don't know that this is the right idea, or how exactly it gets done, you know, the, we had originally, uh, write it before Thanksgiving, when we came and proposed, uh, the idea of the indoor, open-air, small-business incubator. We have property owners in the All Saints District who own large parcels with historic value, that are interested in partnering with the city and finding other, uh, funders, and we have extremely well-heeled property owners in All Saints, legacy Tallahassee families and money.
Excuse me, your four minutes have expired.
Thank you. So, if there's any way to incorporate this in all these discussions or votes going on, I, I don't know how to have that discussion, I just wanted to put on the record that some balance would be well-advised, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers, or any other business with the manager before we adjourn?
No, sir, just a point of clarification on Commissioner Ziffer's motion. So, we're going to draft an RFP, and you want to see it and approve it? And then we'll issue it after that? Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, we stand adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.